I didn't think you were out of time, too.
Nobody tells me anything. I know. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Whitehall City Council Meeting of Tuesday, June 4th, 2024. If you could all please rise for a moment's silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Aug, would you please call roll?
Brown.
Here.
Elmore.
Present.
Morrison.
Present.
Heck.
Present.
Smith.
Present.
Harkar.
Present.
Dixon. President Potter.
Present. At this time, I would accept a motion to excuse the absent member.
Mr. President, move to excuse the absent member.
I'll second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Ms. Harkar, to excuse the absent member. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harkar.
Yes.
The absent member has been excused. We now have the approval of the minutes, which would include the May 21st, 2024 Agenda and Regular Meeting Minutes, the May 21st, 2024 Agenda and Emergency Special Meeting Minutes, and the May 28th, 2024 Agenda and Committee Meeting Minutes.
President Potter, I move to approve the minutes.
Thank you. There's been a motion by Mr. Brown, second by Ms. Smith, for the approval of minutes. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harkar.
Yes.
The minutes have been approved. At this time, we have a special presentation by Mayor Bivens for a proclamation on the LGBTQ+ Pride Month. Mayor, would you please come forward?
Thank you, Mr. President. I care, John.
Yeah, that did jump out.
Thank you, members of council. I have a proclamation from the office of the mayor, which reads, whereas the City of Whitehall supports the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom from discrimination, and whereas the City of Whitehall recognizes and honors the contributions and history of the LGBTQ+ community, acknowledging their rich cultural heritage and the vital impact they have made in our city and beyond, and whereas Pride Month is celebrated each June to commemorate the Stonewall Riots of 1969, a pivotal event in the fight of LGBTQ+ rights, and to honor the ongoing struggle for equality, justice, and acceptance for all people regardless of sexual orientation or gender, identity, and whereas the City of Whitehall values diversity and inclusion as fundamental principles and is committed to fostering a welcoming, safe, and supportive environment for all residents, including those who identify as LGBTQ+, and whereas Pride Month provides an opportunity for all members of our community to reflect on the progress made towards LGBTQ+ rights, to celebrate the resilience and strength of LGBTQ+ individuals, and to recognize the work that still needs to be done to achieve full equality and acceptance, and whereas the City of Whitehall stands with the LGBTQ+ community in promoting equal rights and condemning discrimination, prejudice, and violence in any form, striving to create a community where everyone feels valued and respected, now therefore I, Michael T. Bivens, Mayor of the City of Whitehall, do hereby proclaim June 2024 as Pride Month in Whitehall. I urge all residents to join in celebrating the diversity and contributions of the LGBTQ+ community and to participate in the events and activities that promote the understanding and acceptance and equality for all. And I have my signature and witness whereof on this day, June 4th, 2024. Just so that members of council know, I did pull the street crew from painting the crosswalks. What I will not do in any way, shape, or form is allow our service department or members thereof to have ridicule items thrown at them in disdain as a result of them doing their job. I did receive the report from our public service director, so at least there will be one painting in front of City Hall because that is for their safety. What I will be doing in the upcoming months is I will be updating our harassment of public employees to include our service and street department. Right now, it does not include the police, but it will be updated to include our service department. I've witnessed it myself, even from members of prominence and leadership in our community, but it needs to stop. And if we need to put a regulation in there to stop it, then we will. But right now, Whitehall declares June as Pride Month, and I ask all citizens to observe. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very pleased that you've brought this proclamation forward. I'm also equally disappointed that the behavior towards the city workers, that's very disappointing. Standing Committee Reports. Administration and Financial Management Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Councilperson Amy Harkar for covering for me. We have our minutes on file. We do have three pieces of legislation tonight, and we will meet again on Tuesday at 6:30.
Thank you. Community and Elder Advocacy Chairperson Harkar.
Yes, thank you, President Potter. Community and Elder Advocacy, not last week. There is no pending legislation under this committee this evening, and we will meet again next week sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Community Standards and Enforcement Chairperson Smith.
Thank you, President Potter. Community Standards and Enforcement did meet last week, and my absent members are on file, and we will meet again next week.
Thank you. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services Chairperson Brown.
Thank you, President Potter. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services met last week. Our minutes are on file. We do not have any drafts of pending legislation, and we will meet sometime next week.
Thank you. Public Safety Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety met last week. Our minutes are on file. We will meet again sometime after 6:30 next week.
Thank you. Yeah, I just noticed I did miss Economic Development. Chairperson Dixon's not with us this evening, but Ms. Smith offered to take over.
Economics Development met last week. Their minutes are on file, and they will meet again next week.
Thank you. Now Public Safety, which you just did. Yes, thank you. And Parks and Recreation Chairperson Heck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation, that last Tuesday, our minutes are on file. We have no legislation on the agendas tonight, and we will meet again this coming Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Before we move on to official reports, I would like to thank Councilman Morrison for taking the lead last week in my absence. Very much appreciate it. With that, we will go to official reports, first being Mayor Bivens.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council, and everyone who is here this evening and those that are watching. Just from the mayor's office, there are a couple of things I want to put on your calendar. As you remember, during my first hundred days, I indicated that job creation is a very important thing. We are still hovering at around 19% rate of poverty in the City of Whitehall, and I intend to make an impact in that regard. As you know, I did make the announcement that we will be doing a job fair for the Food Truck Festival. However, we're going to do a mini-job fair on June 21st here at City Hall. We are going to do it in partnership with an organization called NCUS, which stands for National Center for Urban Solutions. And you're welcome. And they will be bringing in a few employers that will be doing a job fair here at City Hall from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. There will be food that will be donated by the Owens Group. They do our diversion program here in Mayor's Court, so there will be no cost to the city to do this. And the goal and the hope is, is to get Whitehall residents employed. So we are right now working on at least four to maybe six employers that will be here with jobs that are available for hiring. So I'm making that announcement to mark your calendars and let your friends and family know. Next, on the council meeting of June the 18th, I was able to meet with ETSS and Councilmember Amy Harkar. We are inviting all of the members from our world immigrant and refugee community to come to council that night, June the 18th. We will be recognizing World Refugee Day on that day, but we will actually be doing a proclamation at the event at the YMCA on June the 20th, which is the actual World Refugee Day. But I do invite any person of that community to come out because we will formally recognize you as citizens of the City of Whitehall. And even if you're not, and you're just a friend, and you just love Whitehall, and you want to come out and show your support, then please come out then. Those are the two official things. Unofficially, I do have to announce, and I've gotten looking at my service director because we have to say this publicly, because I told them that we would do this. The mayor's office was handily defeated by the senior citizens at the Senior Center in chair volleyball. We went there with full intent of being merciless, but did not realize that they are vicious, and they are, they are very good at the game. I told them I would do this, and I will say how well they handled us. We played three games to 10. We only scored five points.
All three games.
Of all three games.
Yeah.
So anyone that thinks that our senior citizens are, and then, and then, after the game, they summarily went to using their walkers and their canes, and they talked trash, and they were very, and they were very vicious. So I say to anyone that's watching, senior citizens, you deserve the honor, that you are given the respect and dignity of what you did, and just know, we will be practicing here at City Hall whenever we get the chance, but we're coming back because we don't take that defeat lightly. But I will say that anyone that wants to challenge them, just know, they play no games. And then lastly, as you know, this Saturday, we will be doing kickball. I've challenged you, Mr. President, to have your council members come out. The sign-ups are very slow, but I'm hoping that they will ramp up by the end of the week. There will be food. I'll be grilling. We're going to have fun and festivities, but it should be a fun time from 11:30 until. But it is a kickball tournament for the city, for the city employees, for any members of the city, any residents that just want to come out and just have a good time. We do a lot of serious things in the city. We handle a lot of serious matters. Why not take that and at least come out, spend the day, spend a few hours together, having a good time? And if you need to call a special meeting, Mr. President, if we get to talking city business and all the councils there, we have some, you know, some sunshine law issues, then just call it as a special meeting. But I hope that you will come out, members of the community will come out, and the rest of the city comes out. It should be a good time. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney Nick Dermis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two quick things tonight. On the agenda is ordinance 48-2024. That's for my office. I was going to ask that that gets suspended and passed tonight. I'm talking with the mayor, wants to ask me to confirm with Auditor Quinzel about some of the unappropriated money stuff, so I might ask, it's being read by title tonight, might ask that it get put on as a quick special meeting before the next committee. I want to talk with the vendor and see if it goes, if it would pass at the following meeting, if that is okay. Part of it is for software for the office, and I need to get a PO started so that we can get implementation started hopefully in July, because if I don't get on the July schedule, it may be into November, December before we can start to implement the software. So that's kind of the urgency behind it. When it comes up, if anybody has any questions, feel free to ask. Second thing I have is the tobacco retail license update. That's the litigation. City of Columbus took the lead on. We joined it along with originally 13 other communities. I believe we're up to 23 or 24 that actually joined the lawsuit. The trial was held about two weeks ago. The judge at that time issued a ruling from the bench after taking about a half hour to consider it, so it was pretty straightforward, and found the provision unconstitutional and enjoined the state from enacting it. But he only did that for those members, for those municipalities that joined the lawsuit. He said he did that because another judge in Franklin County common pleas in joining the state from acting another provision, applied the permit injunction, prevented the state from enacting it, and said he made it statewide. Well, that allowed the state to take it directly to the Supreme Court, and so it kind of expedited it that way. The judge in our case with the tobacco retail license said, I don't know that I have the power to do that, and we see what's happening there, so this only applies to the municipalities that sued, and so it'll go its normal course. Within about a week, the state of Ohio filed its notice of appeal to take that decision to the 10th District Court of Appeals so that it can slowly work its way up. That's kind of where we're at at the moment. But for right now, we can keep enforcing our tobacco retail licenses and restrictions within the city. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Auditor Quinzel's not with us this evening, but Mr. Alexander said he'd be covering for us this evening, so I will flip it to him.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to add some details to a couple ordinances on the agenda tonight. Are we looking at ordinance 44-2024? This relates to a December 2023 payment of $171,000 that was paid to service the April $1 million in bonds for the police renovation. There was an oversight with that procedure, and in a typical course, money would be transferred from Fund 280 to Fund 401 to service the debt. The funds are already available, so there was no transfer made. So essentially, the payment was made with funds that were not for that specific purpose. So this is basically to replenish the funds in Fund 401 to service that debt for this payment and moving forward. Ordinance 46-2024, this is just funds that are needed to service the debt associated with the community park improvements in the YMCA building. This is in the normal course of business. And ordinance 47-2024, the Ohio Attorney General worked with the General Assembly for funds for local law enforcement training, and it specified a certain amount of hours out of 24. And we initially thought this could be placed into the Police Department Grant Fund, but after further consideration, we decided it should have its own fund, and therefore we wanted to create a separate fund to keep track of those revenues and expenses. And we also like to ask for favorable considerations for ordinance 43, 44, 46, and 47.
Thank you. Appreciate the explanation on that. Moving on, Director of Public Service, Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will say, I'm embarrassed to say, as a former collegiate volleyball player, I was put to shame. I mean, I, they tore me up. They tore me up. But so fun, such an awesome time, so great meeting our seniors in the community. So we are practicing. We're thinking about putting a net down in the basement, getting some practice in just for a rematch, but very cool. On the fun side of Broad Street, we are still continuing construction, moving down Broad. We are also on Main Street currently with the waterline project. In the next couple of weeks, they are going to be turning the road down to Yerling, so prepare for that to start happening here in the next couple of weeks. Other than that, I'm just asking for favorable consideration for Resolution 012 this evening. Thank you.
And I thank you. Director of Public Service Greg is not with us this evening. Brings us to Treasurer Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nice to be speaking to you all again.
Yeah.
I don't have an official report this evening. I would just like to shout out all the graduates for the class of 2024 at Yerling High School, one of which is my cousin, my uncle's last child, and my grandmother's last grandchild to graduate high school, so very excited about that. And not only did she graduate, she graduated with honors, and she's attending my alma mater, Audubon University. And I must say, the commencement speaker was great, had a lot of good nuggets, just to take a wisdom to navigate life. So wanted to put that on the record, and that is all I have. Oh, also, America, you cannot win in chair volleyball. Hope your kickball fortunes are a lot better.
I noticed there was less trash talk about the kickball.
There was.
Thank you. The following official reports will be filed in the council office since our last meeting, which would include the Treasurer's Report for April 2024 and the Auditor's Financial Reports for the month of April 2024. Under Communications, Petitions, and Claims, there are no communications, petitions, or claims that were filed in our office since the last meeting. This does bring us to our first poll public. I would invite anyone to come forward, which would be you, ma'am. Should you wish to address council? Okay, having nobody else. Ms. Aug, would you please call roll whether each member of council was given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting and including any add-on legislation?
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harkar.
Yes.
Thank you. Under third reading, we have two items tonight. First is Ordinance 32-2024, authorizing adoption of the May 2024 replacement pages of the codified ordinances of the City of Whitehall, Ohio.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce Ordinance 32-2024.
Thank you.
I'll second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Harkar, to introduce ordinance 32-2024 and for its adoption. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harkar.
Yes.
Ordinance 32-2024 has been adopted. Resolution 12-2024, a resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund, WPCLF agreement on behalf of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, for planning, design, and construction of the 2024 sanitary and storm replacement project and designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce and move for the adoption of Resolution Number 12-2024.
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Brown, second by Ms. Heck, to introduce Resolution 12-2024 and for its adoption. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harkar.
Yes.
Resolution 12-2024 has been adopted. This brings us to our second reading. We have one item listed this evening, which will be read by title only. Ordinance 43-2024, authorizing approving a supplemental appropriation of the amount of $40,000 from unappropriate monies in the General Fund 101, the Building Lot Maintenance Expense Account 101.950.53,300, and declaring an emergency. This now brings us to our legislation under first reading, first one being ordinance 44-2024, approving and making a fund transfer in the amount of $171,000 from the Police Department Tax Levy Fund 280 to the Debt Service Fund 401 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 44-2024 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Smith, to introduce ordinance 44-2024 after suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harkar.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move for adoption.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Smith for the adoption. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harkar.
Yes.
Ordinance 44-2024 has been adopted. Next, we have ordinance 45-2024, which will be read by title only this evening, amending Part III, Appendix Traffic Schedule II of the Traffic Code of the Codified Orders of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, entitled Stop Intersections by adding a stop sign both the northbound and southbound of Shady Lane Road at McAllister Avenue. That brings us to ordinance 46-2024, approving and making a fund transfer in the amount of $20,000 from unappropriate monies in the General Fund 101, the Debt Service Fund 401, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 46-2024 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison, to introduce ordinance 46-2024 after suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harkar.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move for adoption.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison for the adoption. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harkar.
Yes.
Ordinance 46-2024 has been adopted. We now have ordinance 47-2024, authorizing creation of the Ohio Attorney General OAG Continuing Professional Training CPT Fund 218, appropriating $19,552.24 from unappropriate monies in the OAG CPT Fund 218 to the OAG CPT Fund Expense Account 218.000.50,000, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 47-2024 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Harkar, to introduce ordinance 47-2024 after suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harkar.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move for adoption.
Second.
And a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Harkar for the adoption. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harkar.
Yes.
Ordinance 47-2024 has been adopted. Our last two pieces of legislation will both be read by title only, first would be ordinance 48-2024, authorizing approving an appropriation transfer in the amount of $22,000 from unappropriate monies in various 101.500 city attorney accounts to various 101.500 city attorney accounts and supplemental appropriations of $22,000 from unappropriate monies in the General Fund 101 to the IT Maintenance Contracts Account 314.000.51,000 for the purchase of prosecution software. And again, by title only, be Resolution 15-2024, which will have a public hearing on July 2nd, adopting the tax budget for the City of Whitehall, Ohio, for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2025, and submitting the same to the county auditor. This now brings us to our second poll public. Seeing nothing, I will now move on to Community Date Board. And Mr. Brown? Do you have anything?
For the date board?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just was, the community date board. Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Kickballs are going on this weekend. Looking forward to that.
Thank you. Well done.
There's, lunch has started. It's at the high school, Rosemore in Beechwood, for all children. It's Monday through Thursday. Yeah, Monday through Thursday, there's breakfast from 8 to 9, and then lunch from 11 to 12. Market on the Green starts next, or this coming Tuesday, so a week from today, from 4 to 7. There's the Juneteenth celebration coming up, June 22nd, from 3:00 at John Bishop. And then there will also be, high school is holding some camps that will be run by the team themselves. I'm getting some information on that. There will be a fee associated with that, but the fee goes back into the teams.
Anything else for community date board? No? Okay. We'll then go to poll council. Mr. Brown.
All right. So I just wanted to thank everyone here today, everyone watching. I wanted to say this last week, but I did attend the summer kickoff event at John Bishop Park, and I just wanted to thank again Discover and all their community partners who came, supported, offered resources and different things. I thought it was a great event, and I look forward to continuing to get involved with the community through different events, bringing the city out to enjoy the nice weather, everything that the city has to offer. Other than that, if the mayor's office needs to be helped in chair volleyball, I have played against them, so I might have some inside information that might help you, you know, win next time. And then unfortunately, mayor, it seems like your losing streak is going to continue this weekend. I may or may not have just won the Columbus Commons Kickball Tournament last night, so it's going to be rough for you this weekend. That's it. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thank Mr. Mayor. You just got put on the spot. I'd like to thank all those that are viewing our meeting, and thank you for attending. Secondly, thanking the mayor for recognizing June as Pride Month. Congratulations to our seasoned citizens at the Senior Center for their victory in chair volleyball. Sorry. And, not sorry, they did a great job, I'm sure.
They did. They're fantastic.
Also, the summer approaching, we always have really, really good programs here in Whitehall and a lot of events, and I think it would be a good opportunity for the community to come and attend some of those events. to come and attend some of those events so that they could see the camaraderie in our community and the fact that it doesn't matter what color we are. We are all getting along, having fun, laughing, enjoying all of the events that happen. And and I say that as a segue into the comment I'm getting ready to make today. I was I I'm on social media. I don't comment very often, but I did view a post today that, in my opinion, was very sickening. It was disturbing. It was disappointing and unconscionable to me how somebody could actually make such a comment. And the comment was aimed at our mayor, that I publicly will apologize for, and I know it was not me, but it it's an apology that's needed because our community is better than any post that actually puts any elected leader in a bad light. It's one of the posts, I'm not gonna read all of it. It said, first black mayor Whitehall, another woke ASS in. That was the post. And then it said, did you expect anything else from a black mayor? Now, in my opinion, in my humble opinion, just like we recognize all the other areas and all the other cultures and all the other things that happen within Whitehall, if your comments cannot be uplifting, if your comments are are sickening and racist, keep your comments to yourself. It does nothing for this city at all. It 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 puts us in a very, very poor and bad light. And we are doing everything we can to change the the history of what Whitehall was considered and deemed, and comments such as that does not add for us. And for anybody that does see the comment and does not address the person or address the issue, shame on them because silence is consent. And we are better than that. We have come a long way in this city, and we have a long way to go. And comments like that are just not needed. If you don't like Whitehall, you don't like the changes that are happening in Whitehall, Whitehall is not for you because opportunity is here, and we are embracing all cultures and walks of life, and we are loving what we see. We are considered a melting pot here. And so, you know, like, just like bad apples fall to the tree, sometimes people just have to uproot themselves and go because it's not something that we foster in Whitehall. And again, my apologies to you for such behavior because that's not who we are. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Elmore. Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank everyone watching and all those who showed up to watch. And Lori, I'd like to thank you for your comments. Everybody have a good week.
Thank you. Ms. Heck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the person that showed up, who always shows up. I really appreciate seeing you all the time. Thank you for everybody that's viewing from home. Thank you to the mayor for recognizing Judas Pride Month. Happy National Cheese Day, in case anybody didn't know. I am excited for Saturday. I will not be able to be on a team because my son is has a birthday party to go to, but I am gonna come for a little bit. I hope there's a good turnout. It seems like a really fun way to bring together the community, so thank you for putting that together. And thank you, Lori, for the comments as well. And that is all I have. I hope everybody has a great day.
Thank you, Ms. Heck. Ms. Smith.
Thank you, President Potter. I'm very excited to hear that we've got a ring on our team. I thought I was gonna be the only one there, so we'll have to talk after. Pretty excited about that. I'm just hoping that I don't embarrass myself. I was the kid at elementary school. I'd go to KKK and then just fall. So we'll see.
So it's all you.
I can run. Thank you for recognizing Pride Month, Mayor, along with your comments afterward about the attitude of what having towards our service workers for just trying to do their job, as well as your comments, Ms. Elmore. I, for that exact reason, try to avoid looking at those pages, but it's just it's incredibly disheartening. If you don't like something, if you don't just agree with something, you keep on moving throughout your life. There is no your opinion doesn't get to control everyone's opinion. So that's incredibly disheartening to hear. So I appreciate that you looked and we realized there was a gap and that we're meant to solve that gap.
Thank you. Ms. Harkar.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for consistently coming to the events. Saw you on Saturday. I was able to go to the goats on the go event, which was cute. I wasn't able to stay very long, but they were pretty cute. We had fun. I did learn a lot. Like, I thought it was really interesting that they do literally rent out the goats to go into different areas if you have overgrowth, poison ivy, no need to spray chemicals. You can have cute baby goats come to your lawn. I mean, what is better than that? So I thought that was fantastic. I also, at the beginning of the month, I always kind of try to take a moment to acknowledge what's going on in the coming month. Obviously, with pride, thank you for the proclamation. It is also National Caribbean American Heritage Month. Juneteenth is coming up, and we'll have Eid towards the middle of the month. And I wanted to thank you for coming to ETSS, for meeting with us, for your proclamation, for your commitment to diversity and inclusion for everyone, our senior citizens, LGBTQ+ community, our new American community. And I saw the post as well. Was pretty horrified and disgusted by it. So I thought I would share a quote that fit in with Pride Month and fit in with seeing that. So from James Baldwin, "We can disagree and still love each other unless your disagreement is rooted in my impression, denial of humanity, or right to exist." So that's all I have.
For that, I thank you. I'll just wrap things up. Mayor, thank you for the proclamation. I think very well. But as I mentioned earlier, I'm very disappointed, the behavior towards our city employees, but just in general, people harboring those types of thoughts. I find it reprehensible and disgusting. And to kind of piggyback on that, I'd like to thank Ms. Elmore for her comments as well, that social media post. I do not follow social media, but it's very disheartening to hear such things like that coming out because that is just sheer ignorance and hate, and there's simply no excuse or room for it in our community or any other. So thank you for that. I too would like to thank you for coming out. You're always a beacon of sunshine, and we'll look forward to seeing you next week. And I have got nothing further. So with that, I will adjourn us at seven thirty-seven.